Everybody would rise, we'll ask Councilman Allers to give your implication and we'll do the part of the lead.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the blessings, for blessing us daily with all the blessings we need and that we need and that we want. We ask for peace and calm and vision for doing what is best for the city of Jefferson. We ask for your guidance and thought and actions as we pursue. We thank you for your divine intervention in your hand in protecting former President Donald Trump over the weekend from assassination. And we thank you for protecting the brave men and women who put their lives on the line to protect all of us far and away and here at home. And we ask for your protection of our current president Biden and his family too through this election season. Keep them all safe. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I would like to give thanks to the glad United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kind of unusual, but the light of the activities over the weekend, I thought I would read some comments that were put together and just kind of give some thoughts. And again, we appreciate everybody being here. So, good evening and thank you for joining us tonight at City Council meeting. Before we proceed with our agenda, just wanted to address the assassination attempt on President Trump approximately 48 hours ago and Councilman Allers for mentioning that. This act was a stark reminder of the challenges we all face and the importance of unity and respect in our civic discourse. Political violence has no place in our country, in our state, especially not in this city. It undermines the very foundation of our democratic process and threatens the safety and well-being of our citizens. Our focus must be on moving our city forward as well as strengthening this community. To that end, I'm calling on all members of City Council, our Parks and Rec Department, members of our boards and commission, and others to work together for the common good of our citizens. We must demonstrate to our citizens and to our residents and to our leaders that our leaders can arise above the division and govern with integrity and respect. I hope that we can move forward with a renewed commitment to these values and set an example for all our citizens to foster a more united and resilient community. Thank you. Your dedicated service is much appreciated. Now let's proceed with tonight's agenda. Thank you and again, thanks for the prayers and, you know, for cross-the-board prayers for all the candidates and for the people that put themselves out there every day to represent the needs of our constituents. With that, we'll call the meeting to order and do a roll call.
Allers.
President.
Ogleson.
Joe.
President.
Lester.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
Neely.
President.
Schwartz.
Spencer.
Here.
Spicer.
President.
Young.
President.
We have a call.
Alright, takes us to item three, adoption of the agenda. Councilman Allers.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda by removing 12C from the agenda tonight and referring it back to the Administration Committee.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a change of the agenda to add a new business item under number 16 to discuss the ongoing major study.
Alright, we've had two amendments to the agenda. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
On the post, we will delete one, add one. miscellaneous agenda items. It is exciting to recognize individuals in our community, even more of a blessing to recognize our youth. So, I'm gonna ask Shelby Welling to come forward, see her parents are with her, they are more than welcome to come up. I'm guessing by the fact that you're wearing a crown and you have to say so you can identify yourself with the microphone, but if you would just identify yourself again for the folks listening at home and tell us a little about where you've been, but more exciting, where you're heading in the next couple weeks.
Yeah, hi guys, I'm Shelby Welling, I'm the 2024 Miss Missouri Teen USA. I've been involved in pageantry for almost 10 years now and in about two weeks I'm leaving to compete on national TV for the title of Miss Teen USA in Hollywood, California.
What's your background tale and how does that impact? I mean, I know you're very active at Capital High School, so how does that impact?
Yeah, I just graduated a couple of months ago.
So as you move forward into your college career, how does this impact?
Um, yeah, so I'm going to Missouri Valley College on a Fulbright Scholarship, I'll be playing golf out there. Hopefully I still have time for everything, I don't know though. Hopefully, hopefully I can find a way to make time for everything, but it's gonna be exciting, got a lot of good things coming up.
I had grandkids that were in youth golf, probably a little bit behind, you were a little bit ahead of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know you're a very avid golfer and your family, so we wish you the best of luck and it's very exciting, we always love recognizing our, our teens and our youth as, as you move forward. I'm gonna, I've got a certificate, it's basically just a certificate of recognition presented to, to you, recognition of an outstanding achievement in being named Miss Missouri Teen USA 2024 and just wishing you continued success and more incredible achievements in the future. But if your parents would like to come up, I'll come around front, we'll ask Council to come around, we'll do a couple of quick pictures and...
Perfect.
Jeff wanted me to ask if you could help him with his golf swing.
I would. I don't know if he will, I don't know.
You slumps, I can beat you with that.
No, this will be honest.
We haven't played it for a while, so we're gonna go to the hall and...
Game comes right in place.
You might go back to the...
You got washed one more time?
Well, what do you want us to do?
That's your...
That's yours. Ask Shelby to come back to the podium, I know you've been very active in your own foundation.
Yes.
I want to talk to the community just a couple minutes about what the foundation does and how maybe we could all help.
So, in 2019, I was diagnosed with severe late onset idiopathic scoliosis, which is basically just severe scoliosis that came out of nowhere. I wore a brace for 16 months, 24 hours a day, sorry my crown's falling off. Anyways, I wore a back brace for 23 hours a day for 16 months, I went through physical therapy and I ended up having back surgery just a couple of years ago, I'm in recovery for three years now, so it's been great. But yeah, I started my own nonprofit organization, Embrace the Curve, where I raise awareness and education for scoliosis throughout the state of Missouri. And I have two initiatives, so one is Shelby's Kids for Curves, where I donate care kits to hospitals and they're given out to children after, after they're diagnosed with scoliosis. And then I also have Project Titty Bears, where I donate stuffed animals with back braces to children that have recently been fit for braces. And I just kind of took my experiences and turned it into a way to benefit other kids across the state. And country, actually. I have 15 partnering hospitals in 15 different states that we work with, yeah.
Well, that's great. Rachel and I worked together, both other lives in pharmacy for a while and it's just a great family, I've watched them grow up and you and your brother, just so great to have you here tonight.
Well, thank you, thank you for having me.
Good luck in California.
Thank you.
You'll be watching.
Appreciate it, yeah, they'll be on TVs, you guys can watch it too.
Next is Parks and Rec. And I think I see a dapper gentleman back here who's coming up to speak on behalf of Parks and Rec. Everybody looked around when I said dapper gentleman.
He talks about me.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andre Grinson, I'm the President of the Parks and Rec Commission. It is definitely a pleasure to represent the park system. As I stated, the park system is not only just a place where we play and individuals go to the ice arena, but it is a destination for the Jefferson City area. So, it is definitely an honor and as we celebrate the Park System Month, it's definitely an honor just to represent the park and Recreation Commission.
We appreciate you being here, I know you have some board members here and some staff members.
Yes, we do, I would like all of the representatives from the Parks and Rec Commission to please stand and be recognized. Also, Mayor, we do have representatives from our, from the park system and they work tirelessly as you can imagine, so we want to recognize them as well.
It's awesome to come down front real quick, but I really appreciate you being here. I mean, I have said a number of times, we cannot be a great city without a great park system. We are very fortunate for a city our size to have the resources that we have and we place kind of a burden on you to continue that process. I know you've only been in your job for a couple of months and we really appreciate working with you and we're so excited about the opportunities that parks have. One thing I do here is, you need to think about a second pickleball kind of. Apparently that is a highly popular spot over there at Washington Park, do you want to talk a little bit about that, that new, I guess it's the newest?
Yeah, I would say it's the new hotspot of the city. Pickleball, a couple of years ago when I recognized that pickleball was a thing, they said, "Well, what is pickleball?" They said, "Well, it's the new old sport." So, I realized that we had to do something about it and we do have eight areas that have been designated for it and we did the ribbon cutting on a couple of weeks ago, but it is really an honor to make sure we can provide something for all of our constituents here in the Jefferson City area. So, definitely, I had the opportunity to play pickleball the first time and I will tell you, it is a workout. And I'm pretty ferocious when I'm working out, but I will invite the mayor and all the councilmen, I know that Brian was there, so we definitely had a great time. But the pickleball courts, if you have not had a chance to visit, I would encourage you to please do so and if you want to go out and play, let me know.
It's called an old sport, but my grandkids are hepped up about pickleball, so I think it's a cross-the-board sport and I know Ms. Brian keeps trying to challenge me, so I think she's, she's wanting to whip me.
It is definitely multi-generational.
We appreciate all that you do. Again, we've got some really exciting things going on in our parks and it's only because of the dedicated people that have been involved, so thank you very much and if we can get those dedicated people around front. I do have a proclamation, I typically don't read through a lot of it, but there were so many things in it that I liked that I'm just gonna read it and hopefully people will indulge me for a few minutes, but the proclamation says, "Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Jefferson, whereas our parks and recreation program are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the community and region." And we do recognize the impact that it has from the economic standpoint, so I mean, that's an added benefit. "Whereas parks and rec programs build healthy, active communities and aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens." And again, I'll put a little plug in, I know Ms. Brian has been pushing for, drawn a blank on the term, an active inclusive, inclusive park. So, I mean, I know our friends to the north and Old Summit just announced and challenges on, but we look forward to parks being able to meet that need for our community, but again, you guys have done a great job. "Whereas parks and rec programs increase the community's economic prosperity, whereas parks and rec areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty for our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the city of Jefferson recognizes the benefits derived from parks and rec services." Now therefore, I Ron Fitzwater, Mayor of the City of Jefferson, do hereby proclaim July 2024 as Parks and Recreation Month in our great city and again, thank you. And now if we can get everybody up front real quick, do some pictures. Did you have the crown on?
Good job.
Thank you.
Then I hope you get a chance to utilize our parks, probably a little tough on the impact today, but we've got some great facilities around our community. That takes us to item five, opportunities for public comment, I think we have two individuals that indicated, Mr. Plummer, you identify yourself and thank you for being here.
Thank you. My name's Gary Plummer, I'm the President and CEO of the Jefferson City Area Chamber of Commerce and I'm pleased to be here representing 850 members in the chamber to support the Morrow Valley project. I'm with 48 two and three bedroom units proposed for the east side of our community off of Shot Hill Roads. I think it's a perfect site for a project like that, it fits in very well with mixed use development in that neighborhood, lots of choices for the residents there, whether it's food or drugstore or groceries, whatever their needs might be. We're here to support Bo West and his development team and hope that you all will consider supporting it this evening when you have that opportunity. If you have any questions.
Any questions to Mr. Plummer?
Thanks for being here.
And then Ms. Angela Hirsch. There you are, welcome.
Hi.
Well, you're hiding with a good group of people.
You know. Good evening, my name is Angela Hirsch, I've been a Jefferson City resident for more than 30 years. I currently serve as the past, immediate past Chair of the Public Transit Advisory Committee. I sit on the Capital City Housing Task Force and I'm the Executive Director for the Rape and Abuse Crisis Service. I'm here this evening to pull our support behind the Morrow Valley Housing Project that is going to be coming before you all this evening. I'm very, very excited to announce that RAC has agreed to sign on as the nonprofit partner for this housing project. This is especially important to me personally, not only because of the work that I do, but because of the struggles that I have seen of our citizens in this community trying to obtain safe and affordable housing in Jefferson City. Our opportunity to bring this project to our community and our opportunity as RAC to be the nonprofit partner ensures that the families that come into shelters seeking safety after they've experienced violence in their homes will have a safe, affordable, and secure space to rebuild their lives. Our shelter cannot be a permanent solution for these families. Unfortunately, for too many right now, we don't have any place to go. We are currently working with Central Missouri Community Action as well on the project on the west side of town that was funded last year, it's gonna take time for that to be built. We know that this project on the east side of town will also take time to be built, but it is really paving the way for our community's future. I am proud to be a part of it, I am proud of the opportunities that this project brings to our community, to our families, and to sustainability and the opportunity for people here to thrive, which I'm sure is what we all want. So I thank you for your support of this initiative.
Thank you for your comments, for all you do for the community. Any questions, your comments?
Thank you.
Alright, that's all we had signed up under public comment. Item six, public hearings, we do not have any tonight. Item seven, no appointments from the mayor. Item eight, presentation from staff consultants and invited guests, and we have invited some very important guests from the great state of Texas to talk about our conference center. So, I don't know, Mr. Galbraith and and/or Mr. Garfield, Mr. Holtzner, did you want to set up anything or put them in?
Alright.
Anyways, we want to give the community kind of an update on where we are in the conference center and, you know, they've been very generous to come to town and kind of talk about the project and bring you up to date. There's also an opportunity for you to join with us as I indicated in the pre-meeting at Coffee Zone tomorrow morning, so Mr. Holtzner, if you'd like to identify yourself.
So, Luke Holtzner, President of the Jefferson City Regional Economic Partnership, exciting opportunity this evening to kind of unveil some of the due diligence and the study and the work that's been done through our professional partnership with Garfield Public Private on the downtown redevelopment for conference center, hotel, parking structure. So, turning back a few months ago, Garfield Public Private was chosen as the lead development partner with the city to pursue this endeavor. And, you know, really to start that effort in full force, we needed to understand the market as it relates to potential hotel space, meeting space, and parking needs in the downtown. And so over the past couple of months, they've worked with, and they'll outline some of this process, have worked with some other third-party partners, national firms on doing a, a market and parking feasibility study and analysis. So, a lot of the, the pre-work to this has been kind of building out what the process will be to pursue this project. Tonight is kind of the first iteration of some of what this project looks like it could be. So this is where it's starting to get fun into what this has the potential to become. So, excited for Ray and Steve to be here with us this evening to expand on some of that, but here to help support and answer any questions if there may be.
Thanks. Welcome.
Can I stay there? I'll stand and...
You can introduce me.
Yeah, I can, so I'm Steve Galbraith, I'm the Chief Development Officer and Head of Design Construction for Garfield Public Private. We're happy to be here in front of the mayor, city council, and staff and residents of this town. I'm also with my chairman, Ray Garfield, Chairman of Garfield Public Private, and, and we've been, we've been busy. So, we've been working with, with a number of your folks from the city and J.C. Rep. and so it's been, it's been a busy few months. We're here to talk about a couple of studies, we've done two studies so far. CBRE Hotels was brought on to do the study for the hotel market study and then Fishburne is the engineering firm that has been doing the parking study. So we're gonna talk about both of those, we're gonna talk about the hotel market study first. Again, third-party, CBRE Hotels, one of the top hotel advisors did, did the study and here's some of the, the big points of the methodology. So they came to, to Jefferson City, they inspected the project site and the surrounding downtown areas and they determined the accessibility, the visibility, the location relative to the demand generators in the, and, and other hotels. They also analyzed the local economic and demographic trends, they analyzed historic market performance, we'll see some of that here in a few minutes. They also interviewed folks like Diane from the CBB and had a lot of interviews with industry associations and meeting planners. And so what we're gonna see here today is a direct relation to what those meeting planners and those association planners told CBRE Hotels they wanted to see. That, that's important because those are the folks that host conferences here in Jefferson City. They prepared recommendations for the meeting space, you're gonna see the size of the meeting space, the breakout of the meeting space and the size of the hotel. You're also gonna see the amenities that this hotel could be or the types of brands that this hotel might be. And then you'll see something that I'll go into, estimated induced room nights. Induced room nights means the type of, it's, it's, it's the hotel nights that are not coming to Jefferson City because they don't want to stay, okay? For, for group business, there's not enough group business areas for those, those folks to stay. And so, building new state-of-the-art meeting space will bring in what we call induced demand. And so, that, that'll be new folks that aren't staying here right now. So we'll talk about induced demand. And then we'll talk, they assessed the positioning and proposed hotel occupancy and average daily rate compared it with, with existing hotels, so we'll talk about that in a little bit as well. So, move on. If you have any questions during, you want to, want to talk, just feel free. This is an interesting chart, market study, existing market performance. What I wanted to point out in this chart isn't necessarily what the numbers are, but it's the trends. And if you see what, what we've circled, and I don't know if it will, oh, look at that. Wow. So look, look, look at this row specifically. And what's interesting to see is, is the loss of meeting space, right? So, the Truman Hotel closed in the mid-2015, 2014, 16, in that, in that area. And you'll see that market occupancy continued to go down even before COVID. So, you see market occupancy here at 59.6, then 55, then 51, then 40, and it hasn't We see that, that, that trend is showing that, that there's not the right type of group meeting space in, in the, in the market. And the meeting space that is here is just not desirable to the groups that are coming into Jefferson City. Large, large meeting space. So, you see the points at the bottom, loss of meeting space reduced the hotel demand prior to COVID, deteriorating condition of some of the remaining facilities further reduces the group demand, the occupancy and average daily rate are getting negatively affected by underperforming facilities. There's some great hotels in, in this market that are performing well above those numbers. There's some hotels in this market and if you take two of them, they're almost half of the, the comparables that we're using here that are performing well below this, these numbers. So, that's why the numbers look kind of how they do from a, from a, from a standpoint of, we're not used to seeing numbers in that 48% range. Okay? So the market study tells us a number of things. One, it tells us about, got a little, something got messed up on our spreadsheet there, but it tells us about how much market, conference space we're gonna need. This market is looking for about 18,000 square feet of ballroom space that could have the capacity of about 1,000 people event, okay? So, a speaker, tables, bars in the back, the ability to have rounds for a, for a luncheon or for a gala dinner, et cetera. We also see that this market, and I think planners are asking to be able to have 500 to 700 people for a conference with breakout space, so you see junior ballrooms that are divisible. So, for instance, you could have a plenary session in the ballroom, maybe half of the ballroom space, the other half could then be breakout space and the junior ballroom and breakout. So, the market study tells us a number of things. One, it tells us about, got a little, something got messed up on our spreadsheet there, but it tells us about how much market conference space we're going to need. This market is looking for about 18,000 square feet of ballroom space that could have the capacity of about 1,000 people event, okay? So, a speaker, tables, bars in the back, the ability to have rounds for a luncheon or for a gala dinner, et cetera. We also see that this market, and I think planners are asking to be able to have 500 to 700 people for a conference with breakout space. So, you see junior ballrooms that are divisible. So, for instance, you could have a plenary session in the ballroom, maybe half of the ballroom space. The other half could then be breakout space, and the junior ballroom and breakout rooms could then be broken down into 2,000 square feet or 2,500 square feet spaces. And then, we actually have a lot more pre-function space than they're initially calling for, but the pre-function space is a great opportunity to be able to put kind of the expo where companies have their little stands and sit at the table. And so, you can kind of spread this out throughout the entire property. The hotel's going to be a full-service hotel, an upscale branded hotel, similar to a Hilton, an Embassy Suites, a Hyatt Regency, a Marriott, or a Sheraton. The study is called for 250 rooms. So, we see 250 rooms, a mix of king rooms and double queen rooms and suites. Lobby, restaurant, and bar. Those things are really important to us always. It's more than just a three meal restaurant. That restaurant will be of Jefferson City. It's going to have exterior entrances. It's going to have its own signage. It's going to be a restaurant that just happens to be in the base of this hotel. Sure, there's going to be, the guests are going to eat breakfast there, or they'll grab a lunch, but we want it to be a dining option for folks who live here. Same with the bar. It's going to be a great bar. It's going to be a bar that you'll go with your colleagues from work. You can go celebrate with your spouse. It's going to be a bar that I think the entire city can enjoy. We'll also have a cafe, coffee, grab-and-go food, things like that. And then, I think the opportunity that we see here is an opportunity for a really nice terrace restaurant bar up on top of what we're putting as a pool deck. Kind of it's up on maybe level four. Amazing views of the water, views of the Capitol, and it's right across the street from the governor's mansion. So, there's all kinds of beautiful things to look at. Fitness center, pool, hot tub, business center, all the things that you would have in a full-service So, I don't expect you to read this slide, but I'm going to tell you what the important parts of it are. And then, when we issue this study, which will be published on jcrep.org, and you'll see the tab for the hotel, and we will publish all this material, we're hoping by the end of this week. We have a couple more days of the consultant kind of finalizing things, but we hope to do that. But what's really important, and I think you need to see here, is this, oh, sorry, let me back up. This chart right here is showing a number of things. And when we look at the kind of guests, we're looking at three types of guests. There's corporate, there's leisure, and then there's group. And the important part of this is the second line down of each of those tells how much induced demand is going to come in, how much more leisure, how much more corporate. But the important piece of it is, is how much more group is going to come into this market. Looking at these hotels, we see that right now, there is 30,000 room nights of group. And when this hotel opens, it will bring in another 30,000, almost over 28,000 and change. So, the overall room nights for group is going to be almost 60,000 room nights. That's from bringing in the kind of meeting space that association businesses and folks that are traveling around the state. Bringing that in will raise, we call it the tide that raises all ships. It's going to bring in more people to the market that can stay in this hotel. They're not only going to stay in this hotel, but they're going to stay in all the hotels. And if you look at the very bottom, when you download this yourself and you have the full size, you'll see that after this hotel opens, the actual market occupancy goes up for the study by a couple of points for each hotel. So, we see that there's a real opportunity for all the hotels to be able to raise up a little bit when this happens. We think that, just like I said, the existing hotels will see an additional room nights due to the induced demand. This new facility will likely lead the market in average daily rate. That's what is charged for a room to stay there. When a new average daily rate leader comes into a market, that gives the opportunity for the other hotels in that market to have some room to bring up their rates. So, we think it's likely that most of the hotels in this market will be able to bring their rates up a little bit as well. We're going to talk about parking. This is a grid showing the downtown area that the parking study was done on. Again, done by a third party, and they do the mapping of all the parking assets. So, they're looking at all off-street parking, which is parking garages, parking lots, and on-street parking, spaces, loading zones, et cetera. They came here, they spent two days measuring parking, okay? You see April 9th and April 10th, both pretty high peak periods during session. And this is a heat map. And what that map shows, I love this diagram, blue shows under 60% usage. Green is 60 to 80%. Yellow is 80 to 90, and red is 90 to 100. Look how many parking spaces are not being utilized right now. So, current car parking capacity in the city, 2,865 spaces, and there's 652 spaces at the project site. And the project site is right there. And it's really interesting because one of the things you've got to really think about when you do a project like this is, what are you going to do with the parking when this is under construction? And what's interesting is the site actually falls almost exactly in the center. It's the closest walking to almost all the parking that you could have had. You couldn't have laid it out better. But you see, right now, current parking in the study area is only 55%. That means there's 45% of the parking downtown is not being used regularly. And on the site, the garage that we all know and love right there is only being 65% used. 424 spaces. So, let's kind of drill down into some of the numbers really quickly. This is a chart that basically shows the users here down the side. So, you see hotel, employees, conference, restaurant. And then here, you see the quantity down here, and then you see what the zoning ordinance are required. If we just follow the city's zoning ordinances, we go down there. And then, what we use is called the ULI Model of Shared Parking Demand. So, when you build a hotel or a function that uses hotel room, uses parking mostly at night, right, you're checking in later, there's a shared parking model that you can use office buildings that are used mostly during the day. Now, are there people that stay in a hotel all day? Sure. Are there people that work late? Yeah. But you take all that, and we try to figure out how to not overbuild the parking, because parking is really expensive, okay? Building a parking structure, you don't want to just overbuild it for, you know, kind of, as they say, the church for Easter Sunday, because it gets expensive. You have to maintain it. You have to light it and keep it secure. So, if you take all the pieces, the 250 rooms of the hotel right here, the 180 spaces that we would need by code for the meeting space, there isn't a requirement for the restaurant because it's part of a hotel, you know? And then you take the existing parking demand that is used right now in that existing structure. It would show that we need 860 spaces for the parking. When you come over and do the ULI Model Shared Parking Demand, you get a little bit of a bump down because we know not everybody rents a car. Some people are going to use ride share. Some people are going to take the shuttle bus. So, when we get the hotel, we only have 150. Now, we really want, we don't just include those, we break them out when we look at hotel employees, and then we look at conference, and then the restaurant, we break that out too. So, it shows 356 total for the hotel, 430 that will be using that garage, and now we see the grand total of 786. So, when we take those two recommendations and we really look at it, we come down to this, and we come up with a total parking structure attached to this hotel of 780 spaces. So, one thing we need to think about is construction. When this parking ramp that's there today is taken down, you've all seen it, the city is doing everything they can to keep it safe, keep it working, but it's going to come to a point when hopefully the hotel is ready to be constructed, that the parking structure needs to come down. And we will take that parking structure down at the last possible moment to be able to build the new parking structure and the hotel facilities. But as we pointed out in that really cool heat map, there's a lot of opportunity to, even in the short term or maybe even in the long term, to try to figure out how to use some of those parking spaces that are around the city a little bit more effectively. And so, you'll see that when doing that, picking up some of the off-street parking, the private parking, taking some of the off-street public parking, and then the on-street parking, we're still only going to be parking the city at 73%. So, still lots of extra. And the city's going to be taking all kinds of other opportunities to try to mitigate, you can read into these later, but, you know, the city's really going to look at other strategies to mitigate the construction of the parking, temporarily extending times for on-street metered parking, et cetera. But that's something that we're all really looking at. How do we deal with that during the construction of this new facility? And then the next steps. So, like Luke said, you know, in February, we had a conversation. In March, we got started. We've been working on the market studies, and these things don't all happen end to end. There's a lot of overlapping. So, once we get the market studies and the parking studies to a point, then we could start the conceptual design. So, we've been working on designs for the hotel for a while, but we're just to the point now to being able to share what I've just shared with you for the market studies and the parking studies. I'd expect that in the fall, we'll be back talking about conceptual design. We're also working with the contractor on the initial pricing, the kind of drilling down into more detailed scheduling of the construction. And then, Garfield kind of puts together, working with the city and working with the bankers, to do the preliminary capital plan of finance. So, that's our little chat for today. Here for questions, Ray is as well. If you have a hard one, it's for Ray.
All right. Well, we appreciate it. It's been an exciting partnership, exciting opportunity. We've accomplished a lot in the last few months, and we appreciate the diligence in doing that. Questions or comments from council? Councilwoman Dooley?
Yeah. So, with the parking, I was pleasantly surprised to see how much we have available. Something with our community that we're a little spoiled with is people don't really like to walk. So, in the guidance, so maybe how this has gone in other communities of our side, or how to market that to the community.
So, if you remember that heat map, there's so much blue on that heat map, which means it's parking that's not really being used, maybe half. And it's spread everywhere. It's not just in one spot. I think this parking structure is needed from, because it's in a central spot, right? There's a number of businesses that use this, that park monthly. The hotel's definitely going to need it. But I think even once the hotel is built, I think the city really wants to look at strategies on how they can better or more effectively use all that parking that's everywhere. Because, like you said, people don't want to walk. If my office is there, I might not have even known there was a parking structure that was, or parking that was available there. I think one of the things we want to sit down with the city is figure out, how do we connect the city with those private owners and figure out, how do we get these kind of in the open so that the public can use them? So, I think there's a lot of opportunities.
Councilman Spencer?
I know moving with this concept at its current, at its proposed site, the biggest comments that I, or the most frequent comments I get is that there's a real concern that the site's not big enough. And I know we're well in advance of moving along with that. Could you calm those fears tonight and say, look, we've already done multiple studies. The site is perfect for the three?
Site is absolutely big enough. We've done enough studies, and we've done enough of these that we know we can fit it on there. Now, we're going to talk about how much parking do we want? Do we want more parking than that? We know we can fit that parking. We know we can fit the program that we just talked about. But if it wants to grow, things that are in there that I didn't talk about, we have a modest amount of retail in this also. Could there be an ice cream shop or another local company that comes in and has maybe some sort of retail there? Absolutely. And that's not in there. And we can fit that on the site. So, I think you're going to see, when we present the designs, you're going to see there's lots of room. There's a great opportunity for a beautiful terrace roof deck up on top of this. But absolutely, we can fit it.
I'll follow up here, a couple follow-ups here. In your study, you said there's two hotels that are underperforming. I'm not asking you to out those properties tonight, but how close are those properties to our proposed site?
I don't know the exact distance, but they're not right near it.
And I think, you know, really from the community's perspective, I think we could probably seal the deal if you could somehow work your magic of getting Olive Garden into existence. In fact, there might be a statue erected in your honor.
All-you-can-eat breadsticks is amazing thing, isn't it?
Even though we've got a great Italian restaurant, Frye's. Take your free time tonight.
Absolutely.
Councilman Hallers?
Well, the parking study, was it like a peak time for the state? Because we have a lot of problems with our parking, with people staying in there too long, or maybe people that are parking, that there's not enough lots at the state level to park, and they're in that way. And so, when you saw that blue up there, it kind of threw me off, like, I don't know if that was an accurate account of that. And then after that, we have to relook at our pricing structure for parking then on the outlying areas and see what's available for permit parking, if we're going to keep doing metering. I mean, have they, when they looked at the parking, have they saw how much metered parking and time-wise the different areas are, you know, without, I don't know?
Absolutely. We're drilling down into the parking a little bit more. The parking studies were done on April 9th and 10th, so they were pretty peak times. And I think, and maybe first day was a, you mentioned a couple of them, 60%?
Yes. It was during session. Was it today and then?
Yeah. So, they were at peak times. The city, you know, the city's been smart about this, and Luke and his team, we have the ability to have the consultants come back and do it on a non-peak time to see if we can see what the delta is there if we need to. But I think right now, we think we need to know what it is, because it's not just a worst-case scenario. This is kind of worst-case for months at a time. So, but anyways, I think the parking issue, I think it's accurate. I think everybody's a little surprised about all these kind of pockets everywhere. You did see, if you look at that, and when you get it, if you have questions, definitely reach out, but you see the on-street parking, the city-owned parking, was almost 100%. It was almost all used. You see little red stripes everywhere. And so, that's been used, but I think there's lots of private... And so that's been used, but I think there's lots of private parking lots that aren't being utilized. So I think that's something to really look at.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Lester.
Could you say a little bit more about your analysis of the demand or interest in having conventions here and how you were about that and also how that compares with other places where you built these convention centers and how that turned out?
So let's talk about the demand first and conventions. That's kind of what we do is large group hotels for municipalities. This is our niche. And it's really important that when the third party, we didn't do the study. We bring on a company like an HVS or CBRE, but they're the most well-known studies. They're, if these, you know, if there's bonds that are sold, they're the companies that the underwriters or the bond folks like S&amp;P would use to underwrite their bonds. So they know these companies, they know exactly what they're doing. But it's important that they come to the market, they meet with the meeting planners, they sit down with folks like Diane, and make sure that they understand what this market is and make sure they understand what this market could be. Because as you saw in that one chart that I showed, the demand has been dropping off for a couple of years before COVID. And that's because of the lack of suitable large meeting space. There is great hotels with some great small meeting space, but to get a big 500, 600, 700-person event or to do a 1,000-person gala dinner, it's just, there's not the quality of that space for people to come in from out of town.
When group planners call.
Just clarify yourself, please.
Yeah. Sorry, Ray Garfield, Chairman of Garfield. When group planners call the city to see about bringing an association or convention into it, first of all, they need to know that you have the meeting space and modern quality meeting space with all the equipment, connections to the internet, all of that. And if the community has that, then their next question is, do you have quality hotels that are really attached or no further than across the street? So we don't have to bus people from different hotels into the meeting space. And so what we've seen here is that in the mid-teens, the Truman Hotel, which had a lot of meeting space, closed down. And we think that's one of the reasons that the market began to slow down before COVID in most cities that we've seen. 2020 was the disastrous year, the worst year that the hospitality industry's experienced for a century. But this market started to trend down a couple of years before 2020. And now, there's still not the quality meeting space that we see within the city. So there's lost business, that's the way it's described. And that's what the market study people look at is, you know, Diane, she can tell how much business is lost every year. It goes to different communities because they have better meeting space and they have headquarters hotels for the meeting space. That's a lot of the underlying philosophy in doing these market studies to determine what the potential to generate new demand is. And so their opinion is that we'll double the room nights in this city when we open an 18,000-square-foot modern ballroom, 36,000-square-foot convention center, and a quality full-service hotel. It'll be the headquarters for that convention center.
And let me add one piece to that because the job of this hotel isn't just to make money for this hotel. The job of this hotel is to bring in high-impact business to the city that spreads around. And they don't just eat in the restaurant in this hotel, they go eat in all the restaurants. And they didn't buy a Thai, so they go buy a Thai, right? That kind of stuff. You need all that high-impact business.
So I know there are a lot of associations that are based here. And the assumption is, may those, I don't know if they're having conventions now and going elsewhere. Is that part of the study? Do you actually look at those and that they are going elsewhere and how many there are and what's expected is to change with that? That is absolutely part of the study. Diane will tell you because not only did they interview Diane and her organization, but probably a dozen groups that were recommended to be interviewed by your chamber. And so the induced demand looks to be double what the market has been in the past. 35,000 room nights of missed demand if this particular development isn't brought in. That's what the report's telling us. The numbers are impressive. I'm just trying to understand the basis of the numbers. And we are, you know, we developed a hotel recently for another city that built their convention center with no headquarters hotel. They opened it 10 years, well, they opened it, I guess, eight years ahead of when a hotel was finally delivered. And for those eight years with a modern quarter of a million square foot convention center sitting for this city, they were estimating that the people that were coming to use that convention center were spending $25 to $30 a day because they were coming in for daytime events, one-day events. They might stop through McDonald's on their way in or out. They weren't spending $200 a night in a hotel. They weren't spending $100 on a great evening meal. So the economic impact for that community rose from $25 to $30 a night to about $300 a night a day. And that's a lot of the revenue, the tax revenue that comes in, sales tax, as well as hotel occupancy tax and other taxes that come into the community. Thank you.
I know we have meeting planners here. Does anybody want to respond to that question? I know I represent the association. I cannot bring my association to this community with no facility. He would be one of those that would be adding to that. Is there anybody else that wants to address that? Mr. Sheets, you want to just introduce yourself? Thanks for being here.
Hey, how are you?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Richard Sheets. I'm the Executive Director of the Missouri Municipal League. And I just want to reinforce what was said tonight because what reading facilities in Jeff City has really affected our meeting response to your colleagues around the state. We've already moved two of our conferences and meetings to Columbia and other locations because of the meeting facilities here. And we still have, we still conduct our legislative conference here, but we've scaled back because of the facility just doesn't meet our needs. And your mayors and council members and city managers from other parts of state just don't want to stay at this facility. So we really had to scale back and change how we were ducking out our business or our meetings. And it's also really affected our attendance. Our attendance has gone down because they just don't really want to attend. So it's really affected, you know, how we train and educate your colleagues around the state here when you come to our conferences. And the facility that's been planted just meets our needs just to a T. Our meetings are from, I would say, 150 to 300. And we have probably four meetings that we could bring here to Jeff City. But a couple of them we moved, a couple of them just aren't going to consider Jeff City until something's done. So I think this is really going to be a great improvement for our association, associations around city. Because many times, you know, the mayors and council members and city managers that come to Jeff City, our meetings, they piggyback meetings with state agencies when they come to Jeff City. So this is a really attractive location. So come here for the city manager's meeting and they can go to MoDOT, they can go to DNR at the same time and kind of piggyback go to meetings. So this is a very, very attractive location if we had the meeting space that meets our needs. And I would thank you for, let me speak tonight and answer any questions if I can.
Councilman Hallers.
I just had a couple of things. I heard from a nonprofit, too, that no longer hold their meetings here in town because of just, they've grown so big that they've had to look otherwise. One thing I didn't see on the chart was maybe you said we possibly were losing 35,000 potential nights. There wasn't a dollar figure. Do you have an economic impact of what that might, what that might have been? What do average people who come in for that, that spend? And that we may be missing out on? I didn't see that.
Yeah, I'm not prepared to probably come up with a number off the cuff, but we can figure that out.
Oh, yeah. I didn't know if that was going to be part of, that would be some information we could look for down the line and all that.
Absolutely, down the line, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks.
How are you? Good evening. My name's Maria Davis, and I'm the Director of Meetings and Partner Relations for the Missouri Association of Realtors, which is the largest trade association in the great state of Missouri. We are one of the groups that have pulled out of Jefferson City because of a lack of the facility that our members would actually want to stay in. We have been using Jefferson City. And I've been with the association for 10 years, but I'm told that the Big Conference of Missouri Realtors has been in Jefferson City for, say, 30 or 40 years. Until recently, we pulled out our meetings because of the facility, which was just not acceptable to the standards, at the very least, that we had expected from a facility. So we were forced to move that conference, which would involve 300 rooms on peak night. And typically, our conferences run for two or three nights. And we also have average of 400 to 450 attendees who come to our meetings from all over the state of Missouri and sometimes from even out of state. So we definitely want to find a location that our members will be good to have. We typically meet in January because we tie it up with our lobbying day. And we have 300 to 350 Realtors to come to the Capitol just to, you know, talk about real estate. And so we really are very supportive of this chance to have this conference center in Jefferson City because we would love to come back here. I still get members to say, when are we coming back to Jeff City? And I said, until they have a decent conference center that can house all of us, then really we can't go back to Jefferson City. Right now, we only have our small meetings, which take the city, but for the bigger conferences, and we hold these conferences three times a year, we go all around the state of Missouri, to Kansas City, St. Louis, Branson, and Springfield, and Columbia, Central Missouri, Lake of the Ozarks. But we're not able to bring it back to Jefferson City, which we would love to do in the next few years. Thank you so much for listening.
Mr. Vincent, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. My name is Larry Vincent. I'm the Cole County Collector. And last year, I was President of the Missouri County Collectors Association. Our association has met in Jefferson City since its inception. I don't know how many years that's been altogether, but I'd say at least 30 years as having an annual conference, April every year. 2024, this year's the first year we moved out of Jeff City. We went to Columbia. Our members no longer would stay where we were having our conference. And we were forced to move, and we'd like to come back. We always have it in April. The biggest reason is so we can meet with our legislators. There's 114 counties. Most of the collectors come in and bring their chief deputies. So it's a group of 150 to 175 people. We're here for probably three or four days. At least, a lot come in on Monday because we start on Tuesday morning, and we have some training for new collectors on Monday. So we would love to have a facility back in Jeff City where we can start meeting here again and give us the access to the Capitol that we want at that time of the year. It's always been very productive for us, so we certainly appreciate the city and Chamber and J.C. Rep, you know, moving forward with this project. Thank you.
Sarah, welcome. How are you?
Good evening. My name is Sarah Lubert. I am a small business owner and I run seven small associations all throughout the U.S. Three of them are based in Missouri. And I've been a meeting planner for 20 years, a few years for Ron as well. And we have seen, you know, we went from, in its prime, when I was first starting meeting planning, we had, you know, there were several properties for which we could choose from for meetings, and we've just seen that those options dwindle. Every year, I plan at least two advocacy days during the legislative session. I hear a lot of people talking about advocacy days, but we used to plan a lot of other meetings in Jefferson City. We are having to go to the Lake of the Ozarks, go into Columbia, St. Charles, Chesterfield, anywhere that is basically not centrally located for our members. And this is a problem. Our advocacy day, even, we cannot, the options that we have right now for hotels in the downtown area of Jefferson City, in which our members can walk to the Capitol and walk different places that they need to go for our various meetings, are very limited. We actually meet at a non-hotel property right now for two of my groups. It's more work on me because then I have to bring in food from the outside. I have to go and run and get food and coffee and things in the morning. And so that's a lot more work for myself and my team. If we had a property in which we could proudly host our events, we would be more than happy to do so. I think the convention center is a great idea. It would also be, you know, it will bring some competition to the downtown hotels. And competition only brings better. Right now, there's not necessarily a demand for those properties to be improving themselves and providing better services. And by having that competition in the downtown area, it will provide, one, more meeting spaces, but also a good competition and make sure that those properties are willing to bring themselves up to the level that they need to be to suit our membership. Any questions? Thank you so much.
You're getting all kind of help there.
Yes. My name is Michelle Walters. I'm the Director of Education for Missouri Healthcare Association. So I've been with the association for about 20 years, just like Sarah. And Maria told me to come up here, too. But I agree with all of the points everybody has said. I mean, obviously, as a meeting planner for the associations, this is, we can't find the properties we need. Everybody's mentioned the advocacy days and the lobby days. We need it for that as well. We have a huge lobby day and event. But even aside from that, some of the questions, it's not just during session. We have probably six meetings a year that I have to take somewhere else because I can't fit 200 people here, you know, or more. So we, you know, it's not just during, yeah, I wanted, that was kind of what I sat and listened to, is it's not even just during January through May that we need it.
I think it's safe to say we were also approached by state agencies and state government, being the capital city of having interest in keeping meetings here in town. Hopefully, that probably answered your question more than you anticipated, Councilman.
If I could, Councilman Spencer, you asked a question about the site. And so if there is feedback coming at, well, it's not a site that can accommodate this. Steve Galbraith was an architect for 22 years before I was able to bring him into our organization to become my partner 10 years ago. For 22 years, he designed hotels around the world. And for the last decade, he's been designing hotels for our public clients around the country. And so when we bring architects on the team, we have a brilliant architect that oversees them. So I have a great amount of faith in his and the ability of the architects that we have on the team to be able to look at this site. And it is a really good site. I was here about 14 years ago when we were looking at doing another site. And then there was some discussion about moving the hotel out to the prison site, et cetera. And coming back here, the city acquiring this particular site, it's an exciting property, centrally located downtown, adjacent to the governor's mansion, two blocks from the Capitol Building, you know, and with a parking garage, it really does need to be redeveloped. So that's just a part of the program. But the fact that Jefferson City is the capital city of Missouri is just such an important But the fact that Jefferson City is the capital city of Missouri is just such an important piece of saying, what kind of infrastructure do you really want to support? Not only the legislators that come here every year for half a year, but, but the citizens and the community. So we think it's really, really important.
Councilwoman Jobe had a question for a while, then Councilwoman Blackwell.
Two, actually. So the last person who spoke answered most of my questions, but in, in a lot of the feedback from the meeting planners that we've gotten, it was during session. So has there been consistent feedback that this will be used twelve months out of the year, not just when session is in, but that it's sustainable for the whole year?
I, I, I think that, that's going to be the job, is to make sure we're filling the group business outside of session. You're not going to be competing with legislators and lobbyists who are trying to get, you know, pay top dollar to get these rooms. So that's our hope, is that, that we see the hotel, we try to move as much of the group business as we can to that outside piece. Because I think during session, the hotel is going to, you know, lots of people want to come. They have advocacy days, I get all that. But as, as much of their business that we could move to the outside, we'll, I think the hotel, you'll see it fill up during session on its own, so.
But, but outside of session?
Correct. Yeah, yeah. That's, that, that's the job, is to, is to really see how we can fit folks in. And, yeah, in the second half of the year.
Nine hotels.
Yeah, no, outside of session. Sorry, yeah.
Okay, so my second question is about the architectural design, being that it's, a lot of buildings now are being built with sustainability in mind. So is something automatically, you know, will this building be deed certified? Or will it be some sort of, you know, mobile materials? Or something that's very Missouri-centric that can also serve as an example for like sustainable building practices?
Yeah, sure. So sustainability is a really important piece to us. I know it's important to Jefferson City. Our architects, DLR and Facet, it's important to both of them. They're both from Missouri. And, and so we always want to make sure that the hotel is of the place, even if it's a Hilton or a Marriott or a Hyatt. It, it's not going to be cookie cutter. It's going to be custom designed for Jefferson City. So we'll always do that. I think we always try to stretch and see what we can afford to do from a, from a sustainability standpoint. We, we have a number of properties that are, that are built sustainably, and I think we would push that if, if we can afford it. Absolutely.
Councilman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your, your numbers kind of reflected it, but it didn't give an overall number, at least an estimated economic impact of this study. Create such a number at this point?
No, we're, no. So, so the overall economic impact is something that I think we can, we can work on for you. We haven't drilled down and taken those room nights and tried to figure out what that's going across the rest of the market is, because they are going to eat at other restaurants, they're going to, they're going to go out to other bars, and they're going to buy things. So I think that's something that we can definitely look at. We, we've talked about doing that. But that's something you kind of do after this is all done. Then you take that and drill down into what does that mean, spreading it across the market. But absolutely, I think, I think in, in the days to come, we can, we can work on that.
Just real quick, I'd just like to comment on the process. I'd like to thank the mayor
and our administrative staff and our J C Rep team as well. This is a much different process than what was employed, instituted with the previous developer and, and location. And it really opens up the invitation for public input and public engagement. So I really appreciate this process and thank you for doing that. And I know Ms. Molly's a credible piece in that too. And thank you for just patient in getting this done.
We, we, we share what you said. I mean, we've really enjoyed our time with the city. The city, it's a smart city, a driven city. They know what they want. Having a partner like Luke and his team at J C Rep, amazing. So, you know, thinking about things, and I, and I know one of the items that you brought up, housing and where the employees come from and all, I mean, those are things that I know they're thinking about. They're, we're, you know, we're figuring out where are these employees going to come from? Where are they going to live? So it's things like that, thinking about that, years before this hotel is open, is, is what's going to make it successful for the city. So we, we, we enjoy our, our work with, with the city, so.
All right. Seeing no other questions, we appreciate you coming to town. I feel stronger every day that we made the right decision on a partner moving forward. Again, there will be an opportunity for people to ask questions. Come all morning, it'll be a little bit more informal at Coffee Zone, seven-thirty to eight-thirty. Probably hold to that timeframe pretty closely because Mr. Galbraith has a commitment at nine-thirty, then I don't know what your flight schedules are. But there'd be ample opportunity if people want in a more informal.
He wants to give me a ride to the airport.
Anyways, this has been a great partnership. I thank Mr. Holt Snyder and Ms. Kowalski has been an amazing asset to this discussion. We've got a lot of exciting things moving forward, a lot of decision points for council. But we want to make sure that you had an update on what we know so far and where we are. It's exciting information. And I think to answer your question, I think most of us in the association industry, we look outside that legislative process. So, you know, I think the other six to seven months a year are going to be very busy in that facility because that's when most of us have our meetings other than legislative meetings, annual meetings, educational training programs and other things. So, yeah, I think that was a very good question. I think during session, it's going to be very competitive and you better get to hotel staff very quickly. But I think it's going to be busy twelve months a year. So we appreciate all your work. Mr. Garfield, you have spent a lot of time in this community. We're going to do it this time. So we appreciate you being a part of that, that process. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move the agenda on to item nine A, Resolutions, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash eleven.
Supporting the CDBGDR Lytech applications for Moro Valley Housing Development.
Ms. Smith, did you have any comments? I know we have some guests here, but did you have any comments that you?
Yeah, I'll kind of start things off, just kind of give a brief overview. So the resolution in front of council, the mayor tonight, is one of a request from development Mr. Bo West, and he'll give a short presentation on his project here shortly. Basically asking for support from council. That would then be used in their application for community development block grant disaster recovery funds. An application for that, for that project, and those funds would be reviewed by the city. And if, if successful, then they would be able to be basically stacked on top of an application for Missouri Housing Development Commission Lytech funds, so low income housing, low income housing tax credit funds. So approval of that resolution would allow them essentially to move forward with both those applications, first being the CDBGDR application, and then on to M H D C for the Lytech. So I think he'll get a presentation a little bit on what that development would be. Council members here from last year will remember this process about a year ago that we went through for the Stronghold Landing project. New councilmen, I think, will remember the P O D plan that they saw a few months ago. That was kind of the finished product or the finished development plan for that site. That was the outcome of being awarded those funds from the CDBGDR fund. So I think that's the hope with this proposal. With that, I'll let Mr. West give a description of that proposal.
And just a comment. I think it's safe to say that those additional funds were very helpful last December when that project was approved, because it just kind of tipped it even more in the favor of the project, so.
Absolutely. I think coupling those two R D R funds makes that Lytech application a bigger one.
Again, I appreciate the work of Ms. Sinze and, and Councilman Spencer adamant that we tried to preserve some of those funds for a second project this year. So with that, Mr. West, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor, and Council. I'd like to thank everybody that showed up in support of this and spoke in favor of this development. I am here on behalf of the development team for Moro Valley. My name is Bo West. That's back over there, Eric West. And then we have Steve Leitner and William Green with us as well. Between us all, we own and manage close to three hundred market rate units here in Jefferson City, Missouri. And then we also are in partnership together on Cedar Ridge Apartments, which is a seventy-two unit Lytech development here in Jeff City. It was the first one built almost thirty years ago. I believe almost everybody on the council has been able to go take a tour of Cedar Ridge, see our operations out there, meet our property manager, and visit with some of our residents. I think it was just helpful to kind of see what type of development we're, we're talking about bringing to Jefferson City. Before I get into the project itself, look at that screen. There are a few points. I know everybody's probably sick of hearing about this housing study by R K G, but I'm here, so I'm going to highlight just a couple of things from that. Jefferson City, it's noted in that study that Jefferson City has a population that is aging. And in the workforce demographic of ages twenty-five to sixty-four, that population is in decline. And that study noted that the main reason was housing shortage, specifically affordable housing. Twenty-three percent of the employees, I got teed up very nicely for this in the hotel, twenty-three percent of the employees that work in Jeff City, live in Jeff City, while there are many, seventy-seven percent of employees in Jeff City commute out of our community, wants to work days over, taking their paychecks with them, spending that money outside of Jefferson City. In twenty nineteen, before the tornado hit, the market was already getting pretty tight. Once the tornado hit, I can't believe it's been five years ago already now, but it's been, almost everywhere it's running a hundred percent occupancy, no vacancies anywhere. It's impossible to find anything. Anecdotally, at our market rate property Colonial West, I, I'm turning people away, ten to twenty calls a day, requires sixty-day notice, and things are renting as soon as I put it on the internet, sixty days in advance. And Cedar Ridge, I know we're having probably a dozen, two dozen people on the waiting list, so. With that being said, let me talk a little bit about this development. So Moro Valley is going to be a proposed mixed-use development. By mixed-use, that just means there's going to be both affordable and market rate. We've got three different sets of rent rates on this development. We've got eight units that are set aside at thirty percent A M I. And those are going to be four fifty for a two-bedroom and five twenty-five for a three-bedroom. The majority of the apartments are going to be, thirty-five of them, will be at sixty percent A M I, that's area meeting income. And those rents will be established at six hundred for a two-bedroom and seven twenty-five for a three-bedroom. And then we have five units that are market rate, eight fifty on the two-bedroom and a thousand on the three-bedroom. One little caveat on this slide. As part of our application process, we have to have a market study performed. We just got the results back last week. We hired Gil Group out of Dexter, Missouri. They do market studies nationwide. And our rents are actually below the ceilings M H D C sets. So we're going to attend the workshop August first. After we attend that workshop, we might tweak those rents just a little bit to get operational cash flow up a little bit. So this is the site location. Highlighted in yellow there is the site. It's approximately seven acres at the end of Shot Hill Woods Drive. To the west of us there is Easton Plaza, lots of grocery stores, convenience stores, restaurants, and commercial space. To the south is the News Tribune. And then there's a vacant lot there that I believe it, H Vax Shop is going to put a shop there, I think. East of us is approximately seventy acres of undeveloped land. And then to the north, obviously, is Highway Fifty right there. This slide, the little brown dots are current Lytech properties. I pulled this off of HUD's website. You can see right in the center of Jeff City and then towards the south, there's a couple of Lytech properties. I don't know how you did that little pointer thing there. Oh, there we go. That right there is Cedar Ridge. And then there's one outside Martins and one up north in Holt Summit. As you can see, the entire east side of Jeff City has absolutely no Lytech affordable housing. These housing developments, as you know, touring Cedar Ridge, they're very well maintained. Cedar Ridge is thirty years old. It looks like it's a brand-new property still. We have heavy oversight by M H D C on these. We just had our inspections at Cedar Ridge just three weeks ago. And they go, they take a fine tooth to come to your property. I mean, if you've got an electrical cover that's got a chip on it, you're getting, not compliance for that. I mean, they want these properties tip-top shape in their portfolio. So being on the east side, it's really going to serve the residents over on that side of town well, as they have no options for these affordable housing developments over there. Site plan, so when I came here in May and kind of just introduced this idea to you guys, we've changed the site plan just a little bit since then. Originally, we were going to do a phase one on the back of the property up against Highway Fifty, with the front of the property being kind of like the neighbor there, the county retirement fund lawn. And then hopefully get a phase two in a few years. We met out there with our general contractor, and he actually had this suggestion of flipping phase one and phase two. No need to run all the utilities all the way to the back of the property, hoping we're going to get a phase two at some point in the future. We don't know that. It's just money we don't need to spend right now. So we're going to develop the front of the property right now. Right here, it's not really showing up well, but there is a community center, leasing office, and playground on the backside of those two buildings. So this is a letter that Eric and Clinton had drafted up for me on the planning and zoning. It is P U D, very similar to what you guys have just done with Stronghold Landing. If funded, we'll need to go to planning and zoning next January, February, submit a designer review for them to approve, recommend it to you guys, and we'll come back to council and ask for you guys to approve that. They did note in that letter that this, this current property, putting multifamily on it, is consistent with both the future land use of the comprehensive plan and the Jeff City five-year consolidated plan. I saw in the handouts that they had included these floor plans against, so I won't go too long on these. Basically, this is our two-bedroom, two-bath floor plan, open kitchen, open concept design for the living kitchen and dining area. Three bedrooms are very similar. This, we've added an extra bedroom to them, a little bit larger kitchen and living space. Each unit will have its own patio and outdoor storage space. The building floor plan, on each side of the buildings, on the outside, will be two, three bedrooms, and then the inner four apartments for each of will be the two bedrooms. The elevations, the exterior is going to be brick veneer and vinyl siding with asphalt shingles. And then finally, the community building, it's going to have, there's going to be some common area space here for the residents to have access to. There's a maintenance shop in the back corner, and then in the front of the, there's two office spaces. One office space is going to be for, designated for our property manager leasing office. And then the other one is Angela's is alluding to. Racks J C has agreed to partner with us on this. They're going to be our lead referral agency and our service provider. So as our lead referral agency, those eight apartments that we had set at the thirty percent A M I, Racks J C will have preference on those for the set-aside units, for their clients to have access to those units. If we get notice on one, we'll notify Angela or her representative, let her know that we've got a unit coming available. I think it's, I think it's thirty days that they would have to, to place a client in there, create enough space for her and her shelter for somebody else that's been a victim of abuse and sexual assault. And then if they don't fill in those thirty days, then we'll open it up to the general public. The office space that they would have for, you know, if they have clients who they just want to counsel with, or then also, also offer service to the property as a whole. That's what I have for right now. I would appreciate your all's support on this. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions or comments? Councilman Allers, then Councilman Spencer.
I want to thank you. I'm, I'm glad it's being built on the east side of town. I saw my partner, but it actually is a great locations, being a Dollar General or restaurants and gerbs right there, easy walking distance and all that. It just popped into my head looking at that. Is the only way in off of Shot Hills Road? Is that the name of that street right there, brother?
Unless you guys want to connect Shot Hills Wood with Shot Hill Drive.
Yeah. Well, so have we given thought that's?
I want to talk to Public Works Chair on that.
That's fair. Do we have an estimate on traffic flow? Because you know, that's going to be something to think about. And when did you say the completion date? If everything goes well, what do you think? If everything goes well, what do you think?
Completion date, I mean, I was hoping for fall of twenty-twenty-six. I spoke with our contractor, though, and consultants today, just trying to get somewhat of a good estimate. They said realistically, probably look at breaking ground sometime around this time next year to late summer, with a completion date of January twenty-twenty-seven.
I just want to pass on that that'd be, knowing that street and living over there, how the people come off the hill on Eastland, it's not a lot, so that'd be something for either Public Works Chairman or Mr. Marash to have in the back of their mind that probably would be, I mean, I'm not sure how much traffic is, it buries everybody's job as I can. It'd be more traffic on that street, so.
I just wanted to say thank you, you've been a great partner to work with on bringing this proposal forward. You've been very committed to this need in our community for a very long time. You have an excellent reputation. You're anchored here in Jefferson City, and so I just really appreciate your commitment to Jefferson City.
I appreciate that.
I'm looking forward to getting this across the finish line with MHDC.
You have a proposed res... I'm sorry.
I just want to say thank you as well. I think I was most excited when I heard about RACs collaborating with you and partnering on this thing that's going on with the housing. You know, housing is a, we have the shortage here, everybody knows that, but I think it 'll fix more than one problem. It'll definitely help RACs, but it'll help what was just brought up with the hotel. Where are we going to house these people for? Just hearing about the multi-level, multi-tier housing opportunities and the price range, I just want to thank you for that, and the education that you provided me during my tour as well.
Yeah, we're glad you were able to come out.
Yes.
Councilman Housleton, did you have a comment? All right, while we're waiting...
I think I'd say yes, sir.
You have a proposed resolution in front of you, we will need action to get it on the tables.
There he is.
We can see you, but we can't hear you.
I move that we move this resolution forward for full council.
I'm not saying it.
Motion in a second. Do we have any other comments? Are we going to do a roll call? We may have Housleton with a thumbs up.
Allers?
Yes.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely? Schwartz? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Again, I thank council and staff for all the work on these projects. It's great to have a ten oh vote going out of here. I know that's very helpful in December.
Look forward to keeping the council and city and forward more progress, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, takes us to announcements by Mayor, Council and Staff, Admin Committee.
August seventh, seven thirty-eight AM.
That's the schedule. Busy agenda.
I will be here right now.
Finance, we've got to pack it today. Can't hear you, Councilman, if you can hear us. Believe you have a meeting Thursday morning, is that accurate?
We have a meeting Thursday morning at seven thirty in the Boone Bancroft Room.
And then Public Safety, Councilman Michael.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thursday, the twenty-fifth, be in the police training room at our city.
Finally, Public Works.
Yes, we have a meeting August eighth, seven thirty here in the council chambers. Thirty-eight.
All right, and I just had two things I was going to comment on. One, I appreciate Miss Cholespia's left, but I know we had a lot of people working on it, the salute to America, I thought went very well this year, so I appreciate everybody's work in the July Fourth activities, fireworks, the entire day. And then the second is, we are continuing to receive applications on the homeless task force, so that window is closing very quickly, so if people want to get their application in, they need to get that done this week. Consent agenda, item eleven, three items on there, entertain a motion. motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed. All right, fourteen A, twenty twenty-four dash zero one six, bill's introduced.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for transportation alternative program funds.
Marash?
Thank you, Mayor. Clerk indicated this is a program agreement with MoDOT to accept a grant to construct basically a large extended sidewalk along Bolivar Street to connect, based our trailhead at the Missouri River Bridge over to the Greenway Trail. And so, providing that connection not only helps people living here, but also just those visiting off the Katy Trail. We found that we built the trailhead, just a tremendous number of people, this was a stopover, whether they were going to stay all night or get services. And so, we've been kind of piecemealing this a little bit at a time as new development comes on, but this grant will help push that forward and complete that project. The grant is three hundred twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars, and would be matched with our sidewalk funds out of the capital improvement sales tax. That being it, any questions?
Questions on zero one six. All right, that is twenty twenty-four dash zero one seven.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a municipal agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission pertaining to the rehabilitation of the Bolivar Street Bridge over US Highway Fifty, job number J five P three five two three.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you, Mayor. As clerk indicated, agreement with MoDOT, they're looking to rehabilitate the Bolivar Street Bridge on this same corridor, so we worked with them, letting them know about our project, so have a seamless path all the way through there, and this will allow them to close the street when they're doing that work, as well as use some of our right-of-way to complete it.
All right, seeing the questions, item C, you took off of the agenda when we approved the agenda, so that would take us to item D, twenty twenty-four dash zero one nine.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the police department fund.
Remind you, there's a recommendation for a check mark. Chief Wilber?
This bill would request a budget amendment within the police department to utilize insurance funds from a vehicle that was deemed to tell the law through an accident. This amount would be utilized towards the purchase of a new vehicle, and any expenses associated with the purchase of that vehicle would be taken out of our capital improvement sales tax. Reason I'm requesting a suspension of the rules is we do have another vehicle identified, and the dealer is holding on to that until they get a confirmation record for the other, but generally it takes several months to find a vehicle in this day and age, so we do have one identified. If we can move on it, we could get another vehicle back at the fleet here.
Michael, there are requests. To suspend the rules.
To suspend the rules? Yes.
All right, there's been a request to suspend the rules, we'll go ahead and read that again.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the police department fund.
We'll open it for. Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Housleton? Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Schwartz? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Will passes.
All right, no pending bills, item fourteen, nothing on the informal, item fifteen, we will need action on closed session minutes from June seventeenth. Mr. Mayor, we want you to approve. All right, there are motions, second, that will require a roll call vote.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Schwartz? Spencer? Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Housleton? Motion happens.
All right, takes us to new business, I believe we have one item of new business. Councilman Miller?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to just kind of bring up the Matrix study with my colleagues tonight, hopefully not take too much time, but just talk about it, talk about its downfalls, just have a discussion, and maybe see if we want a motion to go a little bit different direction than where we were. It's probably the biggest boondoggle I've seen that's getting on council. It was introduced in June of twenty twenty-three, a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in taxpayer money. Terms of the study say that it should be concluded within seven months, and then Matrix themselves gave them a six-month timeline. We're at fourteen months. So, the timing of this is frustrating in the least. We have a HR director who's, as we all know, taking double duty of a staff, an agency, staff size of four hundred and seven, and it's my understanding we're waiting to see what this study says before we determine how we proceed with an HR director. Probably one of my biggest beefs with this is when I got the first two invoices that we paid this company. The vice president of Matrix Consulting has come to admin committee meetings twice. Coming to those admin meetings, he's billing the city three hundred dollars an hour. I don't make three hundred dollars an hour. I don't think any of my constituents make three hundred dollars an hour, and I'm certainly going to sit here and protect their tax money at something like three hundred dollars an hour. I never realized that was happening. You know, a lot of times with these studies, historically speaking, you spend a lot of taxpayer money on them, and then there's really no, you know, they give a set of recommendations, and in the past, we haven't really utilized those recommendations. Evergreen a little bit. One of the things that was really unfortunate is, this study by the contract that we signed with the company said that they were going to interview staff. I put in probably a dozen emails to get an interview with this company. Finally did, and then the company, who was supposed to be doing a staff efficiency study, I was going to read it, but... They're supposed to be doing a staff efficiency study, started to ask me about a volunteer citizen commission. And so, that didn't make any sense to me, and then I wondered, well, where is the motivation to spend this kind of taxpayer dollars on a study that is double overtime, that it's due? Their timeline of sequence of events is all but trashed. They were supposed to come by their own contract, they were supposed to come to a council And, you know, one of the biggest things, too, with this study is, the contract said that they would interview staff, you know, not just directors, but managers. We've got new directors here who don't have the historical knowledge of the city, and when you interview, and I know they don't have time to interview four hundred people, but when you go and collect information from multiple people of different backgrounds, different demographics, you have a better, you have a greater opportunity to have a better study, the results get better. To my knowledge, they interviewed department directors, city council who wanted to be interviewed, and my city council interviewed them, they told me they would go back and interview managers, then I find out they never did that. There is nothing that I liked about this thing from the beginning, and there's certainly nothing I like about it now, so. I'm in a position that I would like to recoup losses, talk with our city administrator, and see, you know, see what we can come up with, something that's not putting the city in a position, getting taxpayers in a position like this.
Well, I'll just respond to part of it. I know we talked about Mr. Crane and Mr. Mulman addressing, part of the delay was from the time that it was proposed, and four council members here were elected after that. There was a change in the city administrator. We were with an interim city administrator, Chief Schofield, who was aware of the project, but we purposely asked for that to be put on delay until a new city administrator got here, which eventually ended up being Mr. Crane, so. Part of the delay was our initiative saying, we would prefer to have our new city administrator aware of this project, what it's supposed to accomplish, before we proceed with spending those monies, so. We made the decision to proceed kind of in that interim timeframe. We, as a group, and again, four people weren't here, as a group, that was previous council, but we decided that we ought to have a city administrator on staff before we proceeded spending that kind of money. I will let them respond to the other questions if they want. Seemed like Councilman Spencer maybe had a comment, so maybe we'll go to that. There was a reason why part of the delay was in there, it was at our initiative and request.
Contract itself, you know, executes from the date that it's signed, that's what the contract said. And so, I feel like if the city was going to say, we need more time because we're having some staffing change, that this would have needed to be reworked at that time. I mean, Matrix would have been able to move forward and do what they needed to do without any sort of change from the city. I mean, they were under contract to do that. At this point, at that point, when this document was signed by the contract itself, they were under contract to start performing this work. I understand that there was some delay, but that, even then, that seven months still puts them way past the time in which any of this was due. You know, Mayor, with all due respect, I mean, it was April of the following year before I got an interview, after a dozen attempts. I mean, I think Councilor Mulman and others can, you know, were on emails and saw my interest in scheduling a meeting. I mean, I pulled teeth to talk to these folks. I don't think, I mean, you know, I'm not going to speak for the city, and I'm not going to speak for my colleagues, I'll speak for myself and hopefully my constituents, you know. That's really not somebody that I want to do business with, somebody that can't be reached, somebody that at times staff told me was non-communicative to the city, somebody that's billing us three hundred dollars an hour to come and give updates that had no material to our admin committee meeting. I, I mean, I'll let others talk, as you know, I'm very opposed to this kind of spending.
Councilman Spencer?
Well, I think you need to make sure you understand and clarification that this was our pro funds that were utilized. This was not, did not come out of the general, out of the city's budget, overall budget. That's a big, big misunderstanding you have.
These are tax dollars, is what I said.
And, but you're...
There's no misunderstanding, they're tax dollars.
But I think you need to make that clarification. Secondly, I know you've never been a supporter of this efficiency study. I think, you know, the challenge, you are correct, will be with the implementation of it. But I guess I'm frustrated with your approach to staff about coming in and doing sniper tactics about coming in and doing sniper tactics, if you will, on, on trying to catch city staff off guard. I would appreciate it if you would have addressed those questions to either Mr. Crane, the mayor, the ex-director. Instead of bringing it out right here and not allowing them to have time to respond to your concerns.
I emailed staff.
I'm, I'm not finished yet, sir.
But you're, but this is disrespectful. I mean, you're putting words in my mouth, and staff was emailed ahead of me.
I'm not gonna get into debate. Councilman Spencer has the floor. If you would like to respond, I will give you the opportunity. Councilman Spencer?
That is not efficiently, uh, uh, efficient way or effective way to address your concerns. Now, we're going to have this clouded out that city staff is incompetent, uh, did not, uh, answer your questions as far as, uh, being able to have a interview, uh, from, from Matrix personnel. And if you have these concerns, I think there's a proper way to get those, what those concerns addressed. And having it done publicly under new business, I think is just the wrong process. Matrix is a very well-qualified, uh, consultant group. Um, also, this was direct driven by a citizens group that I know you weren't a part of. But a citizens group that was very well-rounded within the community, that had a lot of, and I, I'm gonna say hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours before the contract was even signed. So, let's give Matrix the opportunity to present their, their final work product. To pull the rug out from all the work that previous council did and city staff has done is just disrespectful in the way we treat our staff. So, I would appreciate, you know, uh, I would be glad to help you in, in the proper way of conducting, uh, fact-finding and getting questions answered. I'll be glad to help you with that, so...
We allow Councilman Mealy to make comments, then Miss Perry wanted to make a comment, then Councilman Allers.
Yeah, I, I, I find pause when my approach is questioned. I mean, especially from somebody who, you know, ended city services in a closed session. You know, it's just, it's not appropriate for either of us to do that, you know? I have a point. I'm not attacking anybody. I'm just saying I am trying here to prevent dollars, city dollars that we have, going to somebody for three hundred dollars an hour to come fluff two meetings. It, it doesn't make any sense to me to, if I'm in the private sector, if I'm sitting in my house and somebody's operating, operating this way, we're not doing business. You know, you, you look at these tasks outlined in their contract, and they haven't completed any of them. I mean, it was March, I think, Brian, when I, I emailed the city and, you know, and the other thing too is just to bring, you know, as Councilman Spencer said, to just bring this up right now. I mean, I've been having conversations with staff for months. I mean, I think it was, uh, I think it was very apparent. I've been having conversations with council colleagues who will listen and not attack, uh, for months. And when we don't have any outcomes from a study and we're, we're using tax dollars for it, it doesn't make any sense to me to continue. I can't imagine a study producing a whole lot of value that is not, that is incomplete, somewhat unstarted. They're missing many marks here. They haven't had a council meeting for public input. They haven't engaged managers. You know, I mean, there's like five different things here that they haven't done, uh, and we're many, many months over the deadline in which they were supposed to be complete, all while we have unfilled positions in the city. So, my preference is to find a different way. Uh, this is nothing to attack the people who, who worked on this study. I've been part of groups who have created things and done things before that, that flog, you know? I mean, that's okay. That's okay. I'm not attacking this. I'm just saying I think this is wrong. I think the amount of money is really wrong, and I would like to see us go a different direction. But, but tonight, my, my goal was to invite conversation about that, uh, you know, for that, that direction or, or critique it, certainly. But, you know, I, no, we don't need to attack one another. This, this is me just trying to do what I think is in the best interest of the city.
Mr. Bird?
To make sure that council understands exactly what has been completed by Matrix at this point. Uh, we did a city, uh, Molly and I provided, uh, communication from Matrix to all city staff. They were emailed questionnaires and surveys. Uh, those questionnaires and surveys were sent out via a QR code, and we got a really significant portion of responses. They were spread out throughout the city. Uh, Matrix has provided leadership with the results of those, uh, surveys to kind of give an indication of where deficient areas were. That's something that we have a meeting on the books tomorrow to, uh, cover with Matrix, uh, so that we can talk as department directors to see what we do now, where we proceed to, and kind of what those, uh, surveys and questionnaires provided as a result. Uh, they have gathered all of the information from the department directors. I know that there are some departments, Public Works and PPS, that have spent numerous hours, uh, providing background data and historical information for them. So, the process is moving along. Uh, your request to me, Councilman Mealy, was, uh, invoices that have been paid since the invoices in February and March. We have not paid any invoices since February or March. However, that does not mean that work is not progressing. It's really not a whole lot different than audit services. I wouldn't pay a final bill from someone if they hadn't performed final services. So at this point, I don't find this unusual in the capacity of what we've been given, um, as far as invoices go.
Ms. Perry, just kind of a note on that, it's somewhat minute, but they, you know, saying their contract, they'll bill on a monthly, uh...
And that's, that's true. I mean, but again, we've seen the two invoices, and that's all we've seen. We've not seen any of the work associated with the survey that was produced or anything like that, and we are still working on that at this point, have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow.
Just to add to this survey, Mayor, if I might, you know, I think it's really important for, for the public to understand that, you know, this is while there were individual meetings with a select few, you know, this is largely a survey monkey, something that I do it, can do at work, something that you can do at work, you know? I mean, this is, you know, ultimately, we could do this as a free service in the city where we poll staff, and that's something that I've been in ad, admin committee before, uh, advocating, for, to, to put something, you know, in the books, whether it be in the code or something like that, that, you know, at a certain frequency that, you know, a city administrator would, would poll city staff to gauge the, um, the health of the organization. And so, while, while, uh, I, I appreciate Ms. Perry's comments, I, I just wanna be clear that a lot of what going, going on is that, that kind of basic survey monkey or, or similar product, uh, survey participation.
Councilman Allers?
To my colleague, I just, I do three or four of the people on that citizens committee that volunteered a lot of their time to start this process because of their, um, concern and their love of the city. They wanna make sure that our city is running efficiently, or they're, within, I think they were given a, 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 um, an understanding that, you know, there might be, it, it's time to look at, maybe we can move, uh, either people around or just see what we could do better to serve, uh, the interest of people coming into Jeff City. So they, they put in a lot of hours, uh, and there was talk last year about waiting because we did have Chief Schofield trying to perform a lot of stuff, and then, uh, we, we hired Mr. Crane to come on. The learning curve had to be really quick and really fast, and, um, I can just imagine the emails and calls he has to do and get every day, and, um, I'm not sure there's enough hours in a day for a, a single person to, to do that, so, um, I'm looking forward to what Matrix has coming up in August. As with anything in government, it moves slow, and, uh, after what they present us, if it's in good working order, that gives us the time to do our advice and consent to have the debate, but I don't think, uh, right now is the appropriate time to question that. I would imagine the billing they have for the three hundred dollars coming out of the, the contract they signed, uh, I would assume that, uh, from my standpoint as a, just a layperson. So, um, I, I, I get your, your concerns and all that, but I, I, I would just ask you to give Matrix the time to, when they present this to us, and that way we have ten of us around to decipher it, and each of us will have our questions and the appropriate time to ask the questions, so, um, I just ask my colleague that, um, just patience on this.
Councilman Light, just a brief question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, on the surveys, do we, does the staff just ballpark close? Have an idea of the number of respondents at this point? I know you're gonna get, I know we're gonna get briefed next month, but I'm just curious.
I feel like it was at the fifty to sixty percent mark.
It was close to sixty percent.
Yeah.
Which he said was quite...
Which is quite high.
I don't have my notes in that meeting, sorry.
Yeah, it may be sixty, sixty-five percent somewhere. I think it was presented at the administration committee meeting.
I wish I had mine.
Two months ago?
From Mr. Pennington.
Councilman Webster?
Just a question, is, is, uh, next month, when you get the presentation, is, is that the final report, or where are we at with the study?
I can't answer that question until I think after we've met with, um, Mr. Pennington tomorrow.
No, we, we, we have, um, the analysis from the survey that was done. And then we have the, um, best management practices that we're reviewing at a staff level right now and preparing for the August admin committee meeting.
Will, will the study analyses, everything be done timely for budget cycle? I mean, that's...
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
Because that's, that's starting soon.
It, it will be done before, uh, if, if what they were thinking in the spring and early summer, uh, for the timeline, like I said, we're gonna be meeting this week with them. They're nearing the end.
Just one other question, so the delay that was in place, was that what, three months, four months? What was the delay?
Delay in the total budget?
And, yeah.
Uh, you know...
Stopping it because, because, yeah, I mean, you have to wonder about a company doing the efficiency study in, in a way late. Need a product, but anyway.
If I may?
Councilman Spencer?
There was discussion from the citizens group that was spearheading this initiative, uh, about, and I don't wanna put Count, uh, Chief Schofield on the spot, but he did do some preliminary work on this process. But the citizens group thought it would be best served to wait until a city administrator was, was, uh, it, so that he can usher and navigate this process as well.
I understand, I'm asking how long what that delay was.
Well, it was, it was the delay of when the hiring process started for city administrator till it was finally, uh, a final hiring took place, so...
So how long?
That hiring, that process was not three months, I, from what I remember.
Hiring process was...
It's pretty quick.
Two months, then there was a delay and, I mean, Mr. Crane had to give notice. I'm guessing it was three or four months. I mean, that's part of the problem when things are laid on the table. Tonight, we don't have the answers because we didn't know the questions. We can get the answer to those questions.
But I guess my, I, not to, to, uh, continue on the concern I have with Mr. Allers, but I think I have confidence in city staff. If there was issues from either the finance department, law department, or city administrator, if there was issues or concerns with the progress of how this process was being handled from Matrix. And as far as I know, that has never been addressed to any of us, uh, whether within the admin committee or, uh, any other committees, so I'm not sure where your, I, I, I don't think this is, uh, founded on your, on your part of bringing up this, this, uh, concern of, of a timeline that, uh, of them not, uh, producing a product. That was somewhat on our side of the table, so to speak, of, of, of us being, contributing in that.
Councilman Me?
Well, there's a lot of sentences that I'm not quite understanding and a lot of unknown, and I do think with proper notice that a lot can be, you know, prepared and presented, and, and so hopefully down the road that can be done. But I guess I just wanna ask staff, you know, I keep getting attacked here, but, um, that's fine, par for the course. When, when a study, generally speaking, when a study, uh, goes way past when it's, or, sorry, when a contract goes way past when it's due by the terms of those contracts, we have a process in which we reach out and inquire why? Or were we comfortable in knowing that we delayed it by several weeks, so we weren't, uh, hold them to that, to that original deadline? It seems like it would be one of those two things.
A standard process. I think you have to take each of these service agreements, and particularly those services agreements that are on a highly subjective type professional type service, and kind of figure out what's going on. In, in this particular situation, with a contract that was approved by the city council that didn't have a delay built into it because of the new city administrator, I don't think there was ever a point at a staff level where we said, "This is becoming egregiously overdue." I think every time you do a study, whether it be an efficiency, a compensation, or another type of study, they're always gonna run long. And so, it, it, I, I don't think there's anything in this particular situation that appeared to be particularly egregious in the amount of time that it's taken, so, um, but that's just my personal perspective.
Okay. To Councilman Lester's point, I, I think you're a good one to kind of, you're driving, you wanna get to where you're going. So, these questions will be geared in that nature. The tasks outlined in their contract are employee in, I'm gonna read a couple, employee input, and they're supposed to provide the city a summary of the employee survey findings. So can you remind me when you thought those might be delivered?
We have received those as, uh, leadership, and they'll be with you tomorrow.
Thank you. And then another task of theirs was comparison best practices. They were supposed to develop for us an interim report documenting how the city compares your institutions and industry best practices regarding organizational structure, staffing allocations, and services. Have we received that interim report?
We also received that with the same, in the same email.
Okay. And then they were supposed to conduct a council meeting, um, not a council meeting, but a period of council meeting, allowing input from council and the public regarding all aspects of service, delivery, staffing, and operational practices. Has that been...
They were here in a council meeting, did they not? Virtually. They weren't in the room?
I think it was when we voted on the contract.
They've been...
I can't answer that question.
They, they've been working through the administration committee, and, um, that's been the practice. I do think they sent out email, uh, requests to all the council members.
Yeah, that didn't happen. That didn't happen. You know, I mean, that's, it goes back to where I had to, you know, email a dozen times to get that to happen. But I think, I think...
I would have to check. I'm, I'm not sure.
I think they did come to the council meeting. It was when we voted to approve their contract, which makes sense, so, as far as I know, that's outstanding, and maybe staff would be interested in checking in on that. And then you have prelim recommendations on staffing allocations, organizational structure modifications, et cetera. Is that also part of that pack that is coming tomorrow?
No.
No.
Okay.
But that's part of a final product.
Okay. So in the first month, they were supposed to create a current state assessment. In the first and second month, an employee survey. By the third month, they were supposed to have council community input. By the fourth month, they were supposed to have the best practices to us. Fourth and fifth months, operational staffing analysis. And by the sixth month, they were supposed to have a final report by their own contract. I will wait. I will be frustrated, but I will wait and, and hope for a good outcome of this. What life has taught me is when you see things go downhill over time, you, you have this mark not being checked. And then you have this mark not being checked. And then you have the next mark not, you know, they didn't, they didn't do their interviews for lower level manager, like managers, like they were supposed to do. That box wasn't checked. They didn't have the council meeting, that box wasn't checked. I can't get ahold of them to get an interview myself, that box would. So those things add up to make me nervous about how, how, how good of a product that the city's gonna receive for the funds that have been spent. So hopefully that makes sense.
Have you shared that with the Admin Committee? We have a process in place. We have a committee that's responsible for this process.
On the Admin Committee, Mayor, before you changed that up, yeah.
That wasn't my question. My question was, have you shared this with the Chair of the Admin Committee? Do you have frustrations about this process? We have a process to deal with these kind of things.
I think we pay out many of those. I think. I, I've been working, to your question, I've been working mostly with staff on deadlines and trying to understand how much money the city's spending and things like that, that I'm not necessarily gonna get from admin. So, so I was trying to do some fact finding. But I can certainly work with admin on, you know, God forbid this thing gets a little worse. We, we, you know, I can work with admin on, on figuring out what we do at that point. I appreciate that.
Here's my question and concern. We got 18 people in this room. We've got a process. We can add things to the agenda, but and I read a statement at the beginning of the meeting, I'm trying to live up to it. But interrogating staff in an open meeting when they don't even know the questions that are coming at them doesn't seem like a productive use of our city. When we have a process in place and a committee that's responsible for this project, it seems like those questions ought to be directed at the committee to allow them to have input. And once the committee has acted on it, then it comes to this body. Let's, I, I'm not trying to speak for everybody at this table, but I have no idea the questions you're asking or how to respond to them.
Well, I wasn't asking you the questions or asking you to respond.
You're asking my staff, our staff?
I'm asking our staff, certainly.
How can they respond to questions they don't even know that are coming at them?
So, so Mayor, with all due respect, I think it's a little bit different than what you envisioned. You know, this is a conversation that's been ongoing for months. I mean.
I haven't been a part of it, so I don't know who it's with.
I feel like you were on several emails with, with staff. I mean, I try to include you where, you know, it's hard to reach you if I have a question, but I try to include you where I can. So, you know, I'm not sure what.
I am asking, we have a process in the committee that is dealing with the issue. If there's frustration, then we ought to use that committee to address those frustrations. And staff ought to have the ability to have pre-knowledge of questions that are being asked of them so they can provide answers. There is an answer to how long we delayed. I don't have it on the tip of my tongue. Had I known that three days ago, we probably could have gotten an answer to that question instead of sitting here and guessing. I'm just saying, we have a process in place. Why are we not using the process we have to deal with very critical issues?
So I think my response to it is that Admin Committee, you know, was, was largely changed. And, and when you want to have a conversation that impacts a full ten body council, that's not really something, that's not a conversation you can have in admin committee.
That's why we have committees.
Yeah, but you don't get the opportunity to address a full council in an admin committee.
Everybody's welcome to attend that meeting and many do.
Those are just remarks about what an admin committee is. But the, the reality is, it's not all the council members are available in that type of meeting. And I wanted to have this discussion about this very big concern I have with the city and the way we're spending money to the full ten body council.
I'm just gonna ask people in the future, and I have no way to dictate this, but if people are gonna lay very complicated issues on the table and say, I want to adjust an agenda that went out last Wednesday, last Thursday, that there be some indication to the rest of the council that they have an idea of what's gonna be added to the agenda.
If I can respond to that, some, some folks that you may work closer with, I'm not sure, have new business items remarkably often, and this hasn't come up. So I'm not sure about big processes or about, you know, various things. So I'm not sure why, by me bringing up a concern for this study where, where, you know, where a lot of money is going out the door, that I, I feel is, is very concerning, you know, why that would be an issue. I mean, I know we went a little over here, but, you know, 30 minutes for a discussion that might save taxpayers 150 K? I'm fine with that every day of my life.
Could have been a 10 minute discussion if we'd known what the questions were. So that's my point.
I appreciate you letting me talk about this important topic.
I was very generous tonight, but I'm gonna be more, everybody in this council has the ability to make comments to us as, to you as council members. But if we're gonna start interrogating people, I think it's fair to give them advanced notice of what they're gonna be asked in a public setting. I, I just don't think that's the way we do business. That's why we have an admin committee to address these questions.
I absolutely agree with you. I didn't sit here and interrogate anyone tonight. I sat here and talked about the problems I saw with this contract that we're spending $300 an hour on it, on a senior vice president to come to our action, that I didn't get an interview until I.
I didn't get interviewed.
I didn't get an interview. So it's not interrogation, Mayor. That is me explaining problems I see with something that we're using taxpayer dollars on. And, you know, it's, it's insulting to hear that from you. I'm not interrogating anybody. We, there were a couple of questions asked about things, but.
Councilman Allers, we're, we're moving on. Councilman Allers.
Just real quickly, A, I've never received communication, Councilman Mealy. And, you know, I'm probably one of the easiest persons to get ahold of and talk to. And I'm always open for everything like that. Second of all, some of the things you were talking about, I think I've asked Mr. Pennington at Admin Committee. I'm curious to hear what it's about. So some of the things you were talking about are the things I've asked him about. When do you think we'll hear this? When are you gonna wrap it up and, and things like that? And Ms. Perry could vouch for me that sometimes I, I may ask too many questions, but I'm looking wholeheartedly toward what Mr. Pennington has to give us, giving the due diligence and the study they were doing. The last thing I want to say is I would imagine the billing he's billing is out of the contract price he's got built into it. I don't, I don't, I couldn't imagine we're paying him 175,000 and said, oh, by the way, everything I'm doing right now, I'm adding on to it. I just, I, these gentlemen and ladies here in our big group here are smarter than that. So I may take a little umbrage with that we're, we're paying him $300 an hour without it coming out of contract. If I'm wrong.
No, it's incorrect.
I'm, I'm standing, I'll stand to be corrected and all that. But also, if, I'll bring up just a little point and I'm done. And when we got elected, we went to the Missouri Municipal League thing about what we should do as councilmen. And the protocol that we are going to talk about relates back to the city policy manual we're looking at. And what they presented to us at that meeting said, the best practice, if you have questions, is to go through the city administrator and then to the, copy the appropriate directors. I think you are out of, a little bit out of a line by bringing this up this evening and catching a few people off guard. So I would just reiterate to look at maybe the city charter and, and the Missouri Municipal League information we got when we were both elected and went there to follow the proper protocol and all that. And like I said, my phone's always open. I take calls from quite a few people and I'll be glad to talk to you about this. And, and we can bring this out and, and have a, a final resolution. My door's always open to you, my phone's always off.
I know that, Jeff.
Councilman Spencer.
As, again, as, as the lead council person that, that drove this initiative initially, you know, I've been involved with it. You've never reached out to me about any of these concerns or questions either. And it really goes to the heart of the whole reason of the bill that was going to be introduced tonight about the adopting of the City Official Operating Guideline. So this is, your process is not working, it's not conducive, it's not efficient or effective.
I think this is inappropriate.
To address our issues, and so I would.
Again, Councilman Spencer has the floor.
I just, I would just encourage you to work with your colleagues and I'm, I'm willing to be a part of that process. So thank you.
Councilman Mealy.
Thank you. Councilman Allers, you know, to your point, I mean, I'm trying to think of when, you know, we, so my goal is to not do something wrong or to not follow a process. That's not the objective at all. I think that's the, maybe, what do they call it when somebody likes to do that? I should push that on you. Can't think of the word right now, but. Admin committee leadership changed recently. And this conversation was a long-going, long, ongoing prior to your leadership. And I guess once the admin committee leadership changed, maybe that would have been an appropriate time to, to, you know, at, at the very least, copy you on what I was asking Sheila Ryan or Ryan questions about this study, you know? And can certainly do that. But I, I, it's difficult for me to understand the, the gravity of, of how, how folks think that this is the wrong process when, maybe it's just because it's buttoned up against something they are nervous about or they, they think is wrong or, you know, I don't know. But, I mean, we've knew business things for millennia. And I, I brought it up to have a discussion. But, you know, the rocks are throwing and, and sometimes that just means that there's something bad out there. And if I have to be the voice to try and help the community with that, then so be it. But I'm not trying to impact, offend, or discourage any member of this body. I think my main objective is to have a discussion about something that is concerning and, and that discussion can be ongoing. We can involve everybody that wants to be involved in, in moving on. Thank you.
Well, there was no discussion about anything inappropriate. There was a recommendation that we have a process in place with a committee that's assigned to this project that we've usurped their ability to address this issue by bringing. And again, this council is always available for comment from council members, but this went far beyond comments. There were questions asked of staff that they were not privy to prior to the meeting that they did not have the ability to respond to in an appropriate manner. That's my point.
Councilman Spicer.
Mayor, can I make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn takes precedent. You're gonna have to please make your motion as a motion to adjourn and to go into closed session. We need to read, if that, if that's your intent.
Yes.
We need to read the statement, please.
The Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the public session. It's under Section 610021, related statutes in Missouri. And we're going to close session to discuss the following. The Chair, you find it privileged, subsection 1, statute 6, subsection 2, contract negotiation, subsection, subsection 12. Is there a motion?
Yes, motion.
A motion, we have a second, we're gonna roll close up.
Lester? Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young? Allers?
Aye.